The meeting of the board trustees is a meeting of the board that the public is allowed to attend. As provided, ISD policy BED, we invite members of the public to make comments during the citizens' input portion at the start of the meeting according to the instructions provided with the electronic posting notice of our meeting. Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into a discussion on matters in citizens' input. We remind everyone that this is a board meeting often attended by students and ask that we all conduct ourselves in a manner that best represents the values and traditions of the Isleta Independent School District. This meeting of the board of trustees is called to order at 6:03 PM. We have a quorum with Charlie Bustillos, Sotero Ramirez, Shane Hagerty, Mike Rosales, Connie Woodruff, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Kathryn Lucero is not able to attend this meeting and is excused. It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors, reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, and then posting the colors. The colors tonight are being presented by the junior ROTC color guard from JM Hanks High School. The color guard commander is Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Marie Olivas. The other color guard members are Cadet Captain Andres Rosales, Cadet Captain Amy Orozco, and Cadet First Lieutenant Robert Overgard. The pledge leader is Cadet First Sergeant Avida Contreras from JM Hanks High School. Will you please stand for the presentation of the colors, the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance, the Texas Pledge of Allegiance, and a moment of silence? Please remain standing until the cadets have departed.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, join me in the pledge to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Delatorre, do we have recognitions and introductions this evening?
Yes, President Ochoa, members of the board, guests. This evening, I will ask Dan Martinez to lead us in our recognitions and introductions this evening.
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Delatorre. We have one recognition for you this evening. For safety and health reasons, we ask the board and the superintendent to please stand in your place on the dais throughout the presentation. Audience members, please remain seated until the recognition is complete. Tonight's recognition is in honor of Del Valle High School biology teacher Ramon Benavides, the Isleta Independent School District's newest Texas Teacher of the Year. Ramon was announced the winner late last month during a surprise ceremony at Del Valle High School, where the Texas Association of School Administrators presented him with a trophy and a check for $5,000 for winning the state's highest teaching honor. With Ramon's win, Isleta ISD maintains its championship title of having the most Texas Teachers of the Year than any other district in the entire state. Seven of our teachers have gone on to win at the state level, and now Ramon joins only one other Isleta ISD teacher in advancing to the National Teacher of the Year competition. Congratulations to Ramon for his outstanding leadership, his excellence in teaching, and his exceptional representation of our District of Champions. Ladies and gentlemen, here to accept tonight's recognition is the 2022 Texas Teacher of the Year, Mr. Ramon Benavides. He is accompanied by Del Valle High School Principal Antonio Acuña. Let's hear it one more time for our Texas Teacher of the Year. This concludes our recognition this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Ms. Mathews, do we have citizens' input this evening?
No, President Ochoa, we don't.
Thank you. We will not proceed to the board workshop. Dr. Delatorre, do we have any reports this evening?
Yes, President Ochoa, members of the board. We'll begin this evening with our monthly COVID-19 update, and Ms. Lindley Leeper.
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board, and Dr. Delatorre. This presentation this evening has some different information, one piece you've seen before, but some new information that I think you'll be very pleased by. This slide represents our current indicators. You can see that we are in code yellow. Two indicators are red, one is yellow, and one is green. That's not great news, but this is. So, we have received our confirmed dates for vaccinations to our students aged five through 11. There will be a six-day rotation, beginning November 16th, continuing through the 19th, and then again November 29th and 30th. Every elementary will have a designated date. And then the reason it says each affected middle school campus is because most of our, three of our middle schools don't have sixth graders. And so, if they have sixth graders, they will also have a campus designated date and time when Immunize El Paso will come and administer vaccines to students. We deliberately arranged the schedule so that those vaccines would occur from 3:00 to 5:00 PM in the evening, recognizing that parents probably can't stay in the mornings. They were going to do a morning and evening session, but it's unlikely that parents dropping off students are able to stay and get those immunizations completed. So, Immunize El Paso was gracious and worked with us to set aside 3:00 to 5:00 PM on these six dates. We've already developed generic flyers, and it's generic because each campus will have one that they can send out along with a call-out script for campus administrators to alert parents. So, not only are we sending something home, putting it on peach jar, sending it out via Blackboard, but also have arranged for campus administrators to make phone calls to students. There is a registration process, just like we had to undergo. Have you ever had any adverse reaction to a vaccine, those things? Parents will have to complete those same questions and a registration form for each child, but the information on how to do that before they arrive for a vaccine will be included as part of the flyer. This, and I'm confirming it right now, let me just check, yes. So, it's not exclusive to our students. So, we would, Immunize El Paso will treat any five-to-11-year-old that arrives at our campuses. And it's my understanding Immunize El Paso will also provide the third booster to anyone who's seeking it. So, we will be providing those details, and you all obviously will receive them. Yes, sir.
How are we going to accommodate the parents that can't register via the link? Can they call in and have somehow to register?
We can facilitate that, and I would anticipate we will have hard copies of the registration form as well. Okay, all right. We also received updated public health guidance. The local health authority, Dr. Ocaranza, published new guidance on October 27th and has made it public to campuses now. And what they are doing is withdrawing contact tracing. So, they have effectively said we will no longer do high-risk contact tracing when we've identified a positive case. So, we have produced guidance. We will go through it tomorrow with our leadership team during the leadership meeting, where we talk with all of our principals and APs. They will get this information. And essentially, if a case is identified at the campus, we still have to report the positive case to the local health department. But no contact tracing is required, though we may still recommend it. And the way, the reason we have stated it that way is because at the high school, at the middle school levels, it's very difficult to contact trace. Because by the time we typically get a positive case and notified about it, they've been through eight transitions, eight periods, it's just virtually impossible. Local health authority says it's no longer required. So, in elementaries, it's a little easier to do because they're in a self-contained classroom. So, if on a Wednesday we identify a positive case, we will try to contact trace. We are still required to notify the entire classroom cohort. So, that notification will be made available to parents. They'll always know if there's been a positive case on campus. We also are still abiding by the TEA guidance. We will provide remote conferencing support for any student who is home on a COVID-based reason. So, if they're there for quarantine, which is determined elsewhere, or if they're there because they have a positive case, they are still eligible for the remote conferencing support. As you may recall, TEA has said all along, since the beginning of this year, parents have the option to determine whether their student quarantines at home. So, they may still come to school, and if so, we have provisions where we can accommodate them in the classroom. We, some parents have allowed us to segregate them, push them off to the side a little bit, away, so they're socially distanced from their peers. But if that doesn't work, then we have included them in the classroom, asked them to wear a mask, done all of those things to try to protect the environment and the students around them. But again, that's TEA's requirement that we allow parents to make the choice, and that will continue. High-risk employees may stay at work, or they may opt to use the leave that you've provided for them if they need to stay home and quarantine. They can continue to work as long as they wrap a test and TEA says periodically. They at first said every three days, then they said every other day, then they just said periodically. So, if an employee opts to continue coming to work while they're in, or while they've been identified as a high-risk close contact, they must still wrap a test, and they can't have symptoms. And then, we are no longer reporting high-risk contacts that we might identify, say, in the elementary setting when we had a positive case. We no longer report those to the local health department. They are no longer tracking it, they will not require us to report that. And so, generally, that is the guidance. The one exception I'll point you back to is Bullet Two. If you'll notice, there is an exception, or if there's a positive case identified off-campus. So, this happened with my grandson. He tested positive, but he was home. So, we called and said, "He tested positive, he's not coming to school." But because the test was identified through another provider, the school has no obligation to contact trace at all, and that will continue. If a student is identified positive elsewhere, no contact tracing will take place. And with that, I can take any other questions you might have. No? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Leeper.
Our second presentation comes from our very own trustee, Sotero Ramirez, surrounding the school safety committee update.
Thank you, Dr. Lucero. This, last week, the school safety committee met, which I had the privilege of being the chair, and President Ochoa also sits on the committee. We met on October 28th, 2021, which is one of the three meetings we're required to attend. One of the responsibilities of the committee is to report on the safe and supportive schools program data collection and threat assessment. This is data that has to be reported to the TEA. The report does not have to come to the trustees for approval. However, we did want to make you aware that the committee did approve that report and the uploading of the data to the Texas Education Agency. So, as other things come up, and there's one other report that will be coming our way in the future, we'll bring it to the trustees for their approval to submit to TEA as well. And I'll be glad to take any questions if anybody has anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez.
Item three is an annual financial and compliance report presentation for the year ending June 30th, 2021. And this will be Selena Cereseres via Zoom, so I'm assuming she's going to pop up here any minute?
Yes, I'm here, I just, thank you, Dr. Delatorre. I just need to share my screen if I'm allowed. I believe I'm still this evening.
Can you go ahead and try to share your screen again, please?
Yes, there I am, okay. All right. You all can see that properly? Okay. Thank you so much for allowing me to present today the results of the 2021 financial statement and federal single audit. Our team was made up of Stephanie Dominguez, Alex Chide, Eileen Macarento, myself, and also we had a second partner, Tom Peterson, who did the second partner review after my review. Eileen, Alex, and Stephanie did all of the heavy lifting. And we also want to thank your management team for being so responsive. Kudos to them. It's not every day that we work with clients that we request something, and within hours you have the documentation that we need. So, we thank them for that. That makes our job easier, very responsive. So, again, thank you so much. I know it's been a very busy year, especially with all of the Esra funds having to get that all in order and ready for spending. As you know, we have one single purpose for the audit, is to issue an opinion on both the financial statements and then on any federal program that we test as major. And so, there's three types of opinions, and every entity wants an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion, meaning that the users of the financial statements can rely on the figures presented within that annual financial report. Our process started in March/April timeframe of 2021, and we began having meetings with your management team, understanding any new risk, any new programs, whether it was federal or any new activities within the district that would require us to modify our procedures. We identified the key controls over key areas, tested those controls, and then also tested the controls over the federal programs that we tested this year, that I have a slide on here momentarily. After the district closed its books, they closed their books June 30th. Took about 45 days to 60 days to wrap up everything and give us final numbers to do our auditing. We ensured that we could confirm, corroborate, and substantiate all of the figures presented to us. An inquiry alone not being sufficient. So, we had to make sure that there was third-party confirmation, et cetera. All of this was done in an effort to issue an opinion. So, it's not a one-week process. As I alluded to earlier, we start as early as March, and here we are in November finalizing the process. The internal controls that we focus on are the big five, I should say, the human resources, payroll procurement, accounts payable areas, and information technology, which feeds all of the other significant areas. We also looked at any other revenue sources where cash is received or exchanged, or it changes hands. Attendance changes as well is reviewed. And then, financial close and recording procedures are analyzed and gain an understanding to make sure there's not any risk. And then, of course, our federal programs that we select as major. We are issuing an unmodified opinion. Again, you all have earned this, and this indicates that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. You don't have any internal control findings related to financial reporting, and this is important to not just the Texas Education Agency, but also to the federal government and your monitoring agencies, because they're also looking at internal controls. You don't have any findings related to compliance as pertaining to state compliance or federal. These are the federal programs that we focused on this year. We conduct a risk-based analysis and select large programs, which are our Type A programs, and then smaller programs, which are our Type B programs. The large programs are required to be rotated every third year. And of course, with the Esra funding, the Office of Management and Budget at the federal level has designated the Esra funds as higher risk, and so we have to test those. And we'll be testing those in the coming years, especially as we start spending the next two tranches of money for Esra II and Esra III, which are larger than your first Esra allocation. So, we have adult basic education, there's special education cluster Title II. And then, we have a portion of Esra II here, but this is TEA's allocation. TEA decided to pay districts across the state for the PPRP, which is the Prior Purchase Reimbursement Program. That's a very involved topic, but that Esra II is not Isleta ISD's allocation. That is TEA's Esra II money that reimbursed the district for that PPRP program. You have earned an unmodified opinion over these federal programs, and again, no internal control findings related to these programs, and no compliance findings. And I'll just say that we work not just with your finance team, but we're also involved with the actual federal program director's procurement as Christine is really looking to make sure that the district stays in compliance. If we look at your 2021 budget to actual, just the general fund, you'll see that your final budget for revenues were $409.7 million. Your actual were $410.2 million, so a positive variance. You had budgeted $421.3 million. Your actual expenditures came in at $402.4 million. There was a budgeted, you know, decrease in fund balance. However, you added to fund balance $7.8 million. Ending fund balance is $88.9 or $89 million. That was the expected budgeted amount, but given the actual results, you ended the year at $108.4 million. If we break down the different components, you'll see that general revenue of the $410.3 million is primarily made up of state aid of $295.8 million. It's also important to note that the state that the state supplanted some of the state aid that it was OT with a portion of your Esser II allocation for the whole homeless piece. That affected all school districts in some capacity. Some didn't meet the whole homeless requirements, but Isleta did. Property taxes make up 19%, totaling $76 million. And then you also have other state funding, which is the TRS on behalf amounts. TRS is contributing into the pension and OPEB on behalf of the employees of Isleta ISD. Then you also had some PPE that you recorded in this category. Federal funding totaled $11.4 million, with the bulk of that being your school health and related services, federal revenue or CHARs. And then other local funding was $1.9 million, which was less than 1%. If we move over to general fund expenditures, again, your expenditures were $398.8 million. You had instructional-related services of $244.1 million, 61%. Facilities maintenance and operations were $47.8 million, making up 12% of total expenditures. And then the third highest category was instructional and school leadership of $34.5 million, or 9%. Everything else was 6% or less, as shown here on the graph. I will say that your general administration had $11.2 million, is still 3%, so well under what TEA stipulates each year. If we look at expenditures in total, you'll see that 85% of the cost in the general fund total 85% or $339.1 million. Contracted services, supplies, and other costs are made up of 5%, 7%, and 3%, respectively. If we look at your fund balance, your actual unassigned and assigned fund balance compared to your operating expenditures, meaning that if Isleta continued to operate at this level with expenditures totaling $398.8 million, how long would that unassigned and assigned fund balance last if all revenues were to cease? So for Isleta ISD, that would equate to 86 days. Now, the minimum is 30 days, and that's the danger zone. So with your fund balance, if you continue to spend at this level and your fund balance, unassigned and unassigned, were to go down, to be reduced down to $32.8 million, that would be a red flag to not only TEA, but also your bond rating agencies. If you are between 60 and 90 days, that indicates to the users of the financial statements that you're healthy, you're able to continue to operate. And so 90 days is the optimal. And you're right there at 86. TEA looks at 75 days cash on hand, or 60 to 90 days too of unassigned-assigned fund balance. So you're well within the range of where you need to be in accordance with these regulatory bodies. If you look at the child nutrition program, it's important to note that, you know, you had actual revenues of $4.2 million. And so the budget looks like you were way under budget. But you have to remember that the way the funding worked this year with COVID is that the Texas Department of Agriculture funded many districts through the summer feeding program. And so if you looked at that fund, at Fund 242, you would find that there's an additional $11.5 million. Actual expenditures just in the Fund 240, which were required to adopt a budget for, totaled $6.4 million, but you also had an additional $11.5 million. And that's why there's a difference between your actual and budgeted amounts, because you have to be able to combine both. But TEA doesn't have a mechanism to capture Fund 242. I know TEA is working on that, especially for PIM submissions. The general fund did cover the loss of the child nutrition department by an amount of $2.3 million. And so there was no change in fund balance. So your ending fund balance is still $2.2 million. We go to the debt service fund. Your actual revenues of $39.5 million were less than budgeted amounts by $1.7 million. Your actual expenditures were $45.1 million, and they were over budget by $2.5 million. But this is simply an accounting entry. It's not as if you had not budgeted for cash dispersments. When you place refunding bonds in escrow, you still have to break apart the amounts you place in escrow with any fees that go to the underwriters, et cetera, for bond issuance costs. And so that's the reason for that. So it's not cash dispersments that were not budgeted for, and that has been disclosed in the notes. You had refunding bonds that are premium of $360.5 million issued. You placed $357.9 million to defuse the bonds. You decreased fund balance by $1.8 million. You have an ending fund balance of $54.7 million. And so you had savings of $37 million as a result of this refunding, which is obviously the intent of that. And then finally, you know, these were just your governmental fund financial statements. But if we look at the entire district and we look at it as if it were a business, you would aggregate all of the assets, including capital assets, and all of the liabilities, including long-term liabilities. In the general fund and all your other fund financial statements, you don't record, your governmental fund statements don't capture these long-term items. So your total assets were $1.2 billion, with cash and investments and capital assets and deferred outflows making up the bulk of this amount. When you go down to total liabilities, it totals $1.3 billion, with bonds and maintenance tax notes payable of $906.1 million. And then you have, as we've been seeing it for the last quarter, six years, depending if we're talking about the pension liability or other post-employment benefits, you have $118.5 million and $125.7 million. It's a net deficit of $57.7 million. However, if you were to add back the net pension liability and the other post-employment liability and any deferred inflows and outflows related to those items, your net position would be positive. The net pension liability and OPEB liabilities are your proportionate share of the liability that sits at the state level. These liabilities are divided up amongst all the districts in Texas, and it's based on your contributions that you make on an annual basis. And it's a simple calculation, and you proportionally share in this liability. It's not a liability that you'll have to write a check for. However, TRS has to go through this exercise every year. But you will continue to pay into TRS for both the pension and the OPEB benefits or OPEB at the statutorily determined rates every year. And so those rates may change, increase, decrease. But we're seeing that they're increasing both at the state level for the employee and also for the employer to fund these liabilities. But again, you don't have true liability of $118.5 or $125.7 million. That is all I have for you here tonight. The next steps, in accordance with the Texas Education Agency, the annual audit report requires your approval as Board of Trustees before it's filed with the Texas Education Agency. So approval of the board is requested at this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cedesceres. Do I have a voice motion to approve the annual audit report as presented?
President Ochoa. I move to approve the annual financial and compliance report presentation for the year ending in June 30, 2021, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Rosales, seconds. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
I have a question. Just a comment. I want, at the next presentation, I have a problem with my ear, my right ear. Is there's any possibility we could have it on, in person? Or go out a little bit slower? There was a lot of mumbling, and this thing is very important to me. I'm not saying we're off, but just for future reference, could we have that done, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm ready.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Dr. Delatorre?
Our final presentation is our monthly opportunity to ask our internal auditor any questions relative to recent reports.
Good evening, President Ochoa, Dr. Delatorre, and all board members. This is Ms. Champagne.
I think we just saw you a couple of weeks ago, right?
Yes, sir.
So, no, not that we don't like to see you this often, but I'm sure that nothing has changed from the last presentation?
We have issued about eight to 10 reports, but those are summarized in the last Friday's package.
Okay.
Department and the campus audits.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Champagne?
Champagne, for all the work that your staff does.
Thank you.
Behind the scenes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I concur. Thank you, Ms. Champagne.
Thank you, Ms. Champagne.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now proceed with the agenda review. To discuss the agenda items is listed in the posted notice of the regular meeting of the Isleta ISD Board of Trustees for November 3, 2021, and related recommended motions with the Superintendent and Executive Cabinet, and receive responses to questions and/or requests for additional information through the Superintendent in preparation for deliberation and action on said item at the November 3, 2021 Regular Board of Trustees Meeting. Our consent items are as follows. Number one, monthly financial update as of September 2021. I forgot to ask you, if you have any questions, just please stop me and then we'll discuss this item. Or if you wish to pull an item. Number two, budget amendments requiring board approval. Number three, request for TEA waiver a seventh-grade reading diagnostic instrument. And number four, it's 2021-22 District Improvement Plan. Mr. Ramirez?
Thank you, President Ochoa. Just a few questions and a comment to start. First off, that's an amazing plan. It took a huge amount of work, a lot of people getting involved to help provide that vision for us. And, you know, this year more than ever, especially with the discussion on COVID, I appreciate that vision. And it's something that I can speak to and look for as I do my school visits. I did have a couple of clarification things I'd like to ask. On the one-way dual-language program discussion, we talked about Washington, Alicia Chacon, Edgemir, and Isleta Knolls having the dual-language programs. Is there any possibility we could do that anywhere else outside of that dual-language type program?
So I believe you're talking about our international schools, correct, the third language? So currently under review is North Loop with the consolidation of Assienda Heights. Assienda was our international school. It consolidated with North Loop. We actually just talked about this Tuesday. Now that they've come together as a community, we know who is interested in the program. We are starting, we have our first cohort of kindergartners at North Loop Elementary that are doing French. So their third language is French. Ariel is German. Edgemir is Chinese. Knolls is Chinese. And of course, Alicia Chacon has the five different languages. So that is our next school to label as an international school once we see those cohorts continue to go.
Okay. And is it possible for us to do that without calling it an international school?
Yes and no. So, I mean, all our schools have the dual-language programs, whether it's a one-way or a two-way, and that's between English and Spanish. What makes the label of international school is that third language strand. So that third language strand, in essence, takes kind of a prep period, right? 45 minutes of where you funnel the kids through that third language experience, that third language enrichment. Those schools have that specific FTE assigned to, serve as a third language teacher. So all of our schools have a dual-language program, either one-way or two-way. These particular are our international schools. So that's the way we mark, that's the way we report them.
Okay. So the way I heard you answer that is that, yes, we can do this if we wanted to.
We could add more international schools, correct?
Or we could just add a third language option?
We could add a third language option, but that FTE is where it's difficult for us to get. Third language is not something that's common, Chinese, German, and all those. That's where we have the difficulty of staffing. So that one teacher is assigned to that and continues the whole feeder pattern to continue those languages.
Okay, I understand. But I know what I heard, so, okay. We can arm wrestle over that later. The other thing I wanted to also discuss, and you and I have been having a discussion about dual credit and all the things that are going on, CMR-related things and stuff with our high schools, is I noticed there was a discussion on AP, on instruction, and even the professional development for our teachers and all those things like that. You know, at some point, and Dr. Chacon and Dr. Delatorre, I would really like for us to come back, either at a workshop or some other forum, so that we can talk about AP, and we can talk about dual credit, and we can talk about our successes and our challenges and, you know, and what we're investing in, you know? And last meeting, we talked about paying for the cost of the college testing. I didn't, you know, I don't know why I didn't recognize that, but I didn't realize how much money we put into this already. It's a huge dollar amount. And so we're investing a lot into, you know, the AP. We're investing into on-ramps and to other dual credit initiatives. And so I think I would like for us in the community to come back and find out about what's happening, how we spend our money, and then the success and challenges that we have within the program.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. And, let's see. That's fine, the other things are just really small items. So thank you very much, President Ochoa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. We will now move on to the policy items. Number one, redivision to policy DFE, Termination of Employment Resignation. Action item number one, modification of 2021-2022 Compensation Plan Substitute Salary Schedule. Number two, temporary relocation of some Riverside CTE center instructions to off-campus sites. And number three, ratification of job order contract for Belair Middle School second-floor expansion. And number four, Level Three Appeal by the Sun City Analytical Incorporation Solicitation Number 221024 RFP-RB Environmental Services Hazardous Waste and Recycling Rebid. The order of the agenda has been approved. May I have an electronic motion? Mr. Safi?
Mr. Safi, would you mind?
Yes. Action item number four is an appeal under your public complaint policy, Board Policy GF Local, by a vendor, Sun City Analytical, that submitted a proposal on an RFP, a request for proposals that was issued by the administration, and was not selected for any portion of that award. And per your Board Policy, the procedure by which a vendor in that situation wishes to have the administration, and ultimately the board, hear its appeal and hear why it believes that it should have received at least a portion of the award, that procedure is set out in Board Policy GF Local. This has been through Levels One and Two, which are the administrative levels. This has been through Levels One and Two, which are the administrative levels. Sun City Analytical has not been satisfied with the results it's received administratively, so it had the right to ask for a Board Appeal, which it has done. And when the Board reaches that item on the agenda, you will then have the opportunity to hear from representatives of Sun City Analytical, also of the administration, and also to ask questions before making any type of decision on the appeal. Does that answer your question, Mr. Rosales? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Safi. So proceeding, the Order of the Agenda has been approved. May I have an electronic motion? And second, the consent items listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration.
Mr. President, I move to approve consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by administration.
Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. We have a second by Mr. Hagerty. Please cast your votes.
That machine doesn't want to work today.
I have already fixed the Dr. De La Torre and Mr. Safi, so you won't see that again.
Yes, I was wondering why they were up there. Okay, all votes have been cast. Results are six in favor and none opposed. All right. Policy item number one, revision to policy DFE Local, termination of employment resignation. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion? Mr. Bustillos?
Mr. President, I move... Mr. President, I move to approve the TASB Policy Update 118, recommended revision to policy DFE, termination of employment, resignation, and corresponding adoption of the Board Resolution Regarding Delegation of Authority to Accept Resignations as shown in the Board Backup.
We have a second by Ms. Woodruff. Please cast your votes. Results are in, six in favor, none opposed. Going to action items. Action item number one, modification of 2021-2022 Compensation Plan Substitute Salary Schedule. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? Mr. Ramidis?
Thank you, sir. First off, I'm pleased to see this come before the Board. This has been an issue within our community, and so I'm glad we responded to it in this particular manner. I'd also, along with this, so Mr. Safi doesn't get mad at me, want to congratulate Bobby Russell and the entire team that came out for our job hiring fair last week, I believe it was. The weeks have gone by quick. And so, amazing turnout, and we knew we weren't going to get hundreds of new applicants, but we knew we could dent the issue of shortages in certain places. And so, congratulations, thank you all for the hard work, particularly the HR department. And then the other thing, too, is that we had a meeting last week, the Security, Safety and Security Committee, and one of the issues that came up was we were talking about there are certain parts of our community that have a real problem with substitutes, and they don't even try. Now that we've passed this, I'm kind of hoping that maybe we'll consider a regional hiring fair and use some different strategies, instead of having them come down here to Central Office. So if you would consider that.
Absolutely. And another thing we're doing is we're searching by zip code and assigning substitutes by zip code.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Is there any further discussion? No further discussion, may I have a motion? Mr. Ramidis?
I move to approve a modification of the 2021-22 Compensation Plan Substitute Salary Schedule to increase daily rates in an effort to maintain marketability, as presented to the Board.
We have a second by Mr. Hagerty. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast, six in favor and none opposed. Action item number two, temporary relocation of Riverside CTE Center Instruction to Off-Campus Sites. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? No further discussion, may I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the temporary relocation of some of Riverside CTE Center Instruction to Off-Campus Sites as necessary during renovations at Riverside High School campus, and delegate it to the Superintendent the authority to enter into agreements with public or private entities as appropriate, subject to subsequent Board ratification of any interlocking agreements, and incur reasonable and necessary expenses for use and move costs, moving cost.
We have a second by Ms. Woodruff. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast, six in favor and none opposed. Action item number three, ratification of job order contract of Belair Middle School second-floor expansion. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion? Ms. Woodruff?
Mr. President, I move to ratify an increase in the Superintendent's authority for approval of construction of a second-floor expansion at Belair Middle School to an amount not to exceed $5,520,000, and approving source as various funds.
We have a second by Mr. Hagerty. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast, six in favor and none opposed. Action item number four, Level Three Appeal by Sun City Analytical Incorporated Solicitation Number 221024 RFP-RB Environmental Services Hazardous Waste and Recycling Rebid. The Board will now hear and consider a Level Three Public Complaint Appeal by the Sun City Analytical Incorporated. It is represented by Luis Acuna, its president, and Fernando Chacon, attorney-at-law. The district administration is represented by Lindley Leapers, Chief Financial and Operational Officer, and Susan Austin, Chief Counsel. The record of the Level Two Appeal has been provided to the Board by Mr. Acuna and Mr. Chacon, has been to Mr. Acuna and to Mr. Chacon. Pursuant to Board Policy GF Local, this appeal is limited to the issues and documents considered at Level Two. Each side, starting with a complaint, will be allowed 10 minutes for initial presentation, to be followed by five minutes for rebuttal. Also, Board members will be provided an opportunity to ask any questions they may have of the parties pertaining to this appeal after the parties have completed their rebuttal presentations. I ask Ms. Matheson to be our timekeeper. Mr. Chacon and Mr. Acuna, you may now make your presentation on behalf of the Sun City Analytical Incorporated, limited to no more than 10 minutes.
Hello, I'm sorry. Good afternoon. My name's Fernando Chacon, I'm an attorney in El Paso. I represent Sun City Analytical in this instance. And Honorable Xavier, Superintendent Xavier De La Torre, and Board Member Cruz Ochoa, thank you very much as well, all the Board members, for allowing us this courtesy of this presentation. My client has worked a long time here in El Paso, and he is the only laboratory for 650 miles that's qualified and licensed to do asbestos and mold testing. El Paso should be proud of that. That's not too many places El Paso can claim as being exclusive in this area. And so I asked myself the question, why isn't Isleta Independent School District doing the testing locally, instead of allowing its vendors to go outside the city for more expensive testing that ultimately costs the district and costs the taxpayer? My review of this matter leads me to conclude that the bidding process of the Isleta Independent School District, at least in this case, was not transparent and riddled with nondisclosure. That is, what they, what the requirements that they asked the bidders to present were changed, just without any rhyme or reason. We want to be awarded this bid. And my client will go through a presentation, he prepared a presentation for you for your immediate review or for your later review. I think that the nondisclosure aspects of this bid is legally actionable in District Court, and I assure you that we intend to take it to District Court, but we would rather just take the contract and allow the Board to see that we are the most qualified and we're the best deal for the district. Without further ado, President of Sun City Analytical, Luis Acuna.
Thank you for letting me be here for a few minutes. I am one of the owners of Sun City Analytical, and we are having an issue. And the first bid that was put out, it was canceled, and it gave rise to questions of transparency, as Ferny was alluding to. Why? Because in the second bid, we were the lowest, and we were low by a lot, $53,790. So then, any justification for choosing the low bidder has come to other compelling criteria. To further complicate the justification for awarding the lower bid, the contract is that in the absence of valid reasonings for nondisclosure of material matters. Example number one, the current vendor should have been disqualified because they did not have a certified industrial hygienist, as was labeled in the RFP to have CIH. We'll call him now a CIH instead of certified industrial hygienist. In order to obtain a CIH on this bid, he's a very highly specialized individual, and I'm thinking Isleta needs something like that if they're having some issues. And to understand, there's only 10,000 CIHs in the world, not in the United States, in the world. So it took a lot of us putting our price together, especially because it affected other line items. Now, SEI relied on our determined by including the CIH in our cost. The other guys didn't. Conversely, the other bidder was allowed to not include the CIH. This affected his cost in spite of not including it in the bid. They were allowed to proceed without him, when they should have said non-responsive. Number two, the same thing happened with the requirement for the eight-hour turnaround. Turnaround time is a sample gets taken to the lab, you need results within hours. You guys are doing a lot of work, especially bond money. You know, when you do renovations, you have a bust into a wall, a bust into a ceiling, boom, maybe you have asbestos, maybe you don't. So that project can be delayed, and can be delayed and cost money, and contractors will be charging you additional. That requirement was in your bid for eight hours. In order to get those eight hours, you need to have a local lab. We are the only accredited lab for schoolwork, AHRA, we'll call it. You have to be accredited. We have this accreditation since 1988. We're the only ones in El Paso. We can turn around that within two, four hours. And it takes time to read the sample, so an eight-hour turnaround time is required, and it was required on your bid. There also, on this, the other vendor was also non-responsive in this area. Now, the next slide shows the evaluation criteria that was in the RFP. It may be a boilerplate, maybe whatever, but I'm going to choose certain things in here that they had on the bid package and they didn't comply with. First, bid attribute one states failing to submit or conforming to the offer could result in rejection of the offer. Current vendor did not submit the CIH, as I told you, so they should have been disqualified. Bid attribute number 2.2 talks about deviations. If you have deviations from your bid or what have you, you should put it in there. The current vendor did not submit for the CIH nor the lab, okay? SEI was wrongfully not considered to be the best value of the low bid. We were, kept telling, they kept telling us that low bid, it was in the bid, it was best value. And I understand that. But bid results showed that we were lower by $53,790. SEI was told this was not low or best value. And then they explained to us that it was done by lots. So we took it upon ourselves, reviewed the data, we were low on lots, four and five, and you guys can review those, you have all that data in front of you. These lots make up the majority of the work, as I will show you later. That's where all the meat and potatoes is of this contract, and that's where we had seen that before. So on bid item 76, requires asbestos-balled sample to have results within eight hours. In order to do that, you have to be a National Institute of Standards and Technology Laboratory accredited. They come to our lab every two years, that is, NIST, and reviews that we're doing it correctly. We are the only lab between here, Houston, Dallas, San Antonio. There's no other lab. SEI is only one of 200 in the country, and we've had that since 1988. It would almost be impossible for somebody that doesn't have that to be able to turn around that sample, okay? Other nondisclosures of the appeal process did not stop the issuance of this contract to the district current vendor. Nondisclosure of multi-vendors option to award... Nondisclosure of multi-vendors option to award same lots, and then later try to develop a system of how we're going to issue these POs to different vendors was not in there. So thereby, being able to exclude or limit vendor from getting any work, as I've seen it before. SEI is far superior than any current, than the current vendor or anyone in El Paso, head-to-head. SEI was established in 1987. It's 34 years, we're working on our 35th, God willing. SEI is a professional engineering firm. I am a disabled veteran-owned business. We are certified small business, Texas Department of Transportation disadvantaged business, and other things. Key personnel that we had said that we would use on your projects would be myself, civil engineer, two professional registered engineers, Mike and Jose, my son Chris, he has a Bachelor's of Science in Environmental Management, and also a Master's of Occupational Health and Safety. My other son, Monaco, he has a Bachelor's of Science in Environmental Engineering. Michael Villanueva is our mycologist for the mold lab. Jessica Contreras is his sidekick, also BS in Microbiology. Julio Ronquillo would be doing the fieldwork for you in your projects. He has a Bachelor's of Arts in Environmental Management. My other son, Carlos, he's in Austin, he has a Bachelor's in Environmental Management and Master's of Public Administration. He helps us with the regulations in Austin. If something's changing, he keeps us abreast of that. And then we have Dr. Acuna. He is a pharmacist, registered pharmacist, and he helps our laboratory. So it's highly qualified people here. I have been working in the industry for 38 years. I am one of the original board members for the Texas asbestos regulations, and I helped write the first set of regulations for the state of Texas. I'm currently on the board to review them all.
Your 10 minutes are up, please.
10 minutes are up. Can I do just a little bit of closing?
You'll have five minutes for rebuttal.
Take it.
You need some minutes for what?
It's just to summarize, to close out.
Okay. Is that okay with?
Yes.
Okay. What I really should spend time, should have spent time on is why is Sun City the best value? I have three POs that you've guys issued here. If you had plugged it, our numbers in here, you would have had a 20% to 30% savings. That's number one. Number two, you have for rules and regulations, apparently the current vendor does not know the regulations, and he's billing you for additional services you don't need. If you see these three POs-
Excuse me, this was not raised in the prior levels of appeal and cannot be raised new at this time.
We were not issued these items until we requested them. We requested them early on, but we were never given a lot of this information until we were going to come here. And so, these three POs, they show that the current vendor charged you for 52 samples T E M at a cost of $3,705.
Again, I have to object-
But you should have only been charged $1,475.
I have to object, they got this through a Public Information Act request, which they could have gotten at any time. We provided it promptly. So it was not a matter of us holding this information back from them. This was not part of the appeal process record. They got it in addition. They shouldn't be allowed to raise it now at this level of appeal.
It is not part of the appeal process because that information was asked for at the initial part and not given to us until lately. So there's no way that we could have gotten it to a Level 2. But the point is that this is the gist of the argument that Isleta is being charged more than they should be charged, and that's why we feel that there is a difference and the board should consider that.
Yes, sir, but I think we just need to close because we've already exceeded the 10 minutes.
Okay.
And if you could just close on your closing comments, please.
Yes, that in closing is that this appeal process has been very painful for us, and we just feel that Isleta is not getting their share. We are the best value for Isleta at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The administration may now make its presentation, limited to no more than 10 minutes.
Good evening. President Ochoa, Dr. Deletory, members of the board, Susan Austin representing the district administration. I have Ms. Leaper here. Also, Ms. Gerlach could not be here tonight with the change in the board meeting. She had a conflict and she couldn't be here. Ms. Leaper heard the Level 2 appeal. Ms. Gerlach heard the Level 1 appeal. This is a Level 3 appeal, as Mr. Sofi told you, explained earlier, that it has already been heard and denied at Level 1. It has been heard and denied at Level 2, and now the vendor has the ability to come before the board. This, as you heard from the vendor, this is a determination of best value. That is what we use under Education Code 44.031, and that includes many factors. It's not just restricted to considering price. The vendor put up the evaluation criteria. It's in the solicitation record, it's on page 30. It shows like there's so many price for points, there's so many price for best, for long-term need, there's so many for reputation and quality, there's so many for prior experience with the district. So there's several factors, not just price, and that is our standard procedure for procurement of services. The record also shows at page 122, 123, those component scores and the overall scores, for example, lots four and five. Those are some pages that show, they have blue on them, and they show how the different bidders on those lots were scored. So Sun City, it's correct that Sun City did receive the highest component score for price because they were low price on lots worn five, but that wasn't the only factor that the evaluators considered. Under the scoring, there were other factors that they put in too. So when they did the other scoring of all the factors, Sun City was not the highest overall score. The vendor that was awarded was the highest overall score. That happens. You know from your experience sitting on the board that there are times when the lowest-priced vendor or bidder, under a best value situation, does not get the highest score by the evaluation committee. We had an evaluation committee who was trained on this method and was qualified by their experience in construction and maintenance and environmental management. So, we had the proper evaluation, and it, the delegation was made to the superintendent or the superintendent's designated to award that based on the evaluation, and that happened. Another firm was awarded on these various lots that Sun City is now appealing. The award did not, this process did not deviate from any law, rule, or regulation or board policy. And in the solicitation terms and conditions and the instructions given to all the bidders, including Sun City Analytical, that was stated as the basis on which a vendor could appeal if there was a deviation from law, rule, regulation, or board policy. But in the meantime, we awarded the bid to another firm, and Sun City, yes, they appealed, but they did not go to court to get an injunction, which Chapter 44 of the Education Code allowed them to do. They could have gone at that point without exhausting remedies and sought an injunction to hold it up. In the meantime, we've awarded someone, and we've been using that vendor. Both, we have used both Sun City and the vendor who was awarded RNA in the past, and so there was experience that the evaluators could use in considering their decision. So the record shows also, you can see from the responses that were given, and they're in your packet, at Level 1 and Level 2, we tried to reach a compromise with Sun City to award perhaps multiple vendors, to award Sun City in addition to the original vendor that was awarded. But in the end, we were not successful in those negotiations. Sun City wanted to be the sole exclusive vendor and wanted us to un-award the other vendor. And that is not in the best interest of the district, that is not what our procedures allowed for. And it wouldn't be fair to the other vendor too. You haven't heard about the qualifications of the other vendor. I don't doubt the qualifications that Sun City puts forward, they're a very well-qualified firm, but the evaluation committee went through its standard process and determined that the other vendor was more qualified on the published scoring criteria. So the board's role is not to substitute its judgment. Perhaps if you all had been, if different people had been on the evaluation committee, if it had been raining, if it had been snowing, who knows? Some people may have made a decision differently. Reasonable minds can differ. But your job is not to sit in the shoes of the evaluators, but to see that the process was fair. Sun City asserts that it was not a transparent process, but it was. Yes, this was a rebid because when the first bid was submitted, and that hasn't even been brought up, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to go there. When this, when this solicitation was issued, all of the terms and conditions were included. The idea that, that there wasn't a certified environmental hygienist, that was not a condition. It was just something that if you had it, you could put it out there and you could bid on it. There was not a bid by the other people, so we took that out of the, out of the mix. No one was penalized, no one was benefited. If we need a certified hygienist, we can issue either go-get quotes for that, and if they're the only ones who have one, chances are, they'll be used. But it was a fair process. It was a process that was handled in a very straightforward way that we use in, with many solicitations, and for that reason, we would ask that the board uphold the appeals, the denial of appeals at Level 1 and Level 2.
Sun City Analytical may now have its rebuttal argument, limited to no more than five minutes, please.
Thank you. The devil is in the details. So when the evaluation committee makes it an evaluation and gives and awards certain points, we requested this information and we got it later, but the fact of the matter is that there is no substantive, no factual way that we could have gotten a lower rating in any way. The other company does not have anybody that I know of that has a degree. They don't have, they don't have a lab, they don't have the expertise, they don't know the regulations. Right now, they're charging you, the Isleta Independent School District, in excess, and this is, and then the CIH, the CIH, my client adds the CIH to the proposal, makes his bid go up way up high, higher than he can, and this other one, this other vendor doesn't include it, and they don't penalize him, so he doesn't have to account that, account for that in the bid. So my client is penalized for following the regulations and the bid. So there were two areas where the competing vendor did not follow the regulations, and at the last minute, it says, well, it's okay if they won't follow the regulations, when the bid process says that that's a disqualification, an item of disqualification, that they don't fulfill it. So that's nondisclosure. In my, in my book, and as I read the law, nondisclosure and making us go this way, relying to our detriment on what happened, is actionable in court. And we do not, we did not want to get an injunction for something like this because it was, they were never told us that, that the bidding process, if we bid, that we could have lost the contract and we, and they would respect us filing an appeal or on what they were doing and challenged their action, and that, okay, well, you can challenge it, but in the meantime, we're giving the contract to the other bidder. So what, what transparency is there? That's nondisclosure, that's actionable in court. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The administration may now make its rebuttal argument, limited to no more than five minutes.
Thank you. When the requirements in the solicitation about deviations or when someone would be disqualified, first of all, if someone doesn't bid on something, they're not disqualified. That just comes out of the mix. So they were not, Sun City was not penalized for the cost, putting in the cost of a certified hygienist. In fact, if you look at pages 108, 109, 10, 11 of the record, what you will see, and this was explained at Level 1 by Ms. Gerlach to Sun City, is that when not, when not all bidders bid with a price for the certified hygienist, that was just taken out of the mix. So that money was not added in there. She explained that. Also, the numbers that you saw leading to the $53,000 difference, she also explained that that was, it was a chart that was generated by our procurement bucket system, but that was not what was used in the evaluation. We, Ms. Gerlach shared exactly what was used in the evaluation and how apples were compared to apples in price, and we admit that Sun City got the lowest price and got the points for the lowest price on lots four and five. But on lot four, there was a difference, but on lot five, there was a very small difference, and the other factors came into play and made Sun City not the highest-ranked vendor. Again, you are not hearing today all the factors that might come into play to make the RNA the better vendor, so you don't have the full picture, so you really are not here to relitigate the facts. You're here to see whether the proposal and the process was fair. In terms of transparencies, I don't know of anything that we failed to disclose to Sun City. What we did, as part of settlement negotiations, offer a way that multiple vendors might share the responsibilities, but certainly that's not a nondisclosure of that. The solicitation terms and conditions said from the outset, the district reserves the right to award multiple vendors if it so chooses. So again, what we did is we decided that it was in the best interest of the district to award the highest-ranked vendor that was not Sun City, and therefore, we followed the standard rules and processes. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, the board members will now have an opportunity to ask any questions that they may have of the parties relating to this appeal. Do any of the trustees have any questions they wish to ask?
I look to my colleague.
Mr. Hagerty.
Sounds like we're in Congress, we're not.
Ms. Austin, you said that the certified industrial hygienist was taken out of the bid because only one had it? Why was it put in in the first place if it was subsequently taken out?
I'm sorry, your last question was what?
You stated that the certified industrial hygienist was taken out of the bidding process, so it didn't- whatever price they had for the C I H, they took that out, right? If it wasn't needed, why was it put in there in the first place?
It's not that it wasn't needed. So the first, the scoring based on price, where we award 40 points, that is an apples-to-apples comparison. So we don't put into that comparison anything that isn't an apple, to an apple. So that's a relative price comparison. So we didn't compare, for example, that would skew the price. If we left in all of the cost of the certified hygienist, that would make Sun City's price be higher because they would have included not only the price for this and for that, but also for the certified hygienist. That is not how we do it. When there's not a way to compare them all, we take out anything that doesn't allow us to compare apples to apples. So the fact that where, where the evaluators could take into consideration that Sun City had a certified hygienist and others didn't, they could have realized that that was very, very important to our environmental solicitation needs. All right? And apparently, they thought, the evaluators decided it was not that important that we were gonna find that the other people didn't meet our needs. We could still, we felt that we could still get that service in some other way, including perhaps from Sun City, but we didn't need to get it in this solicitation. And there was no way to include it in the price comparison. Now, the other thing I want to say is that it, it didn't, because the price wasn't in there. Also, there was an hourly rate quoted for the certified hygienist by Sun City. Now, the, I don't understand their comment on how that somehow caused their whole costs to go up, the costs of the other people. Why were the other people's costs higher or lower or this or that because of the certified hygienist? That was a line item. They were the only ones who bid it. So they were not penalized by including that. I'm sorry, that's a, it's sounding very complicated, but that's the way we do the first price scoring, is a relative scoring. So we need to have apples to apples.
And I guess that was my question. In the initial proposal, was it, these are the requirements that you have to meet? And if you don't meet these requirements?
I'm sorry, in the initial proposal, what?
There's a, I'm assuming there's a list of requirements that you have to meet? Was that one of the requirements that you had to meet? And then it was subsequently decided, well, we don't really need it?
No. These bid lines were not make-or-break requirements. You could bid on them if you had it. You could not bid on them if you didn't.
And then regarding the, the lab turnaround time, was that also?
That was another thing that Ms. Gerlach addressed with Sun City in the, in the Level 1 appeal, was that was another something that we could investigate, whether we were comfortable with the turnaround time that the proposed awarded vendor could make? Would that be sufficient to us? Again, our solicitation terms and conditions allow us to waive any of our requirements. Now, there are some things in a, in a large, complicated solicitation like this that we can waive certain things in order to get a workable arrangement with vendors. And so, yes, we determined that what the awarded vendor, the other firm, could provide would still meet our needs.
So if the initial requirements were set up and then you go back later and say, "Well, these guys do meet those, but we don't really need them"? How, how does that? I guess I'm having a hard time understanding why we would set parameters and then turn around and not follow them, waive them. Thank you.
So I think there's confusion between what the terms, conditions, and parameters of the bid are versus the things we are looking at purchasing. So we, this bid actually had like 45 or more items that we might want to purchase. We don't have to purchase any of them. We might only purchase a few of them. And we might opt to, because we don't use it very often. So one of the things is a three-year re-inspection. Well, I only need that every three years. And it was one of the areas where they bid the lowest. But if I only need it every three years and they're not the lowest on some of the other items, it makes no sense, when I'm looking at, does it meet the needs of the district to rate that highest? So there's terms and conditions which have nothing to do with the items we, we ask for. And as Ms. Austin was saying, so I think maybe what you were talking about with regard to, why did you include it and then throw it out? What, I think what she's really saying is, a no bid is, is effectively a zero. And if they bid a price for it and you compare them, well, all of a sudden, their scoring goes, it looks like their price has inflated because they've been compared to zeros. So we pull it out and just don't evaluate it in the value or the cost of the bid because it would be unfair. It's not, it's not appropriate to say, "Well, they didn't bid, and they didn't bid, and they didn't bid, but this one has a price, so therefore, they can't be the lowest price because they had a price." That makes no sense. So that's why it's just completely removed from the price evaluation, not from the bid, but from the price calculation.
And let me say one other thing. I can point you to a couple of places in the solicitation where there are qualifications, and you will be thrown out. You won't qualify. For example, you have to be, all firms must be registered and licensed to practice their respective professions within the state of Texas. Your project manager has to have a certain license. Your inspector has to have a certain license. The, the people that you use for certain positions, they have to be employees of the firm. They can't be sub consultants. So there are some things that we did put in there that said, "You must, you must, you must." But the certified hygienist was one of the things that you might be able to offer to us, or you might not. It was not a make-or-break requirement. As to the eight hours for the laboratory, again, before we solidified the award with that vendor, we found out, we inquired what their turnaround time was, and we felt comfortable with it meeting our needs.
And my, my last question would be, when was this approved? And who approved it? Why wasn't it board-approved?
So it was issued in July. I, I have the dates, I'm sorry, I wrote them down somewhere. It was issued in July and awarded in July. This comes under the threshold of what has been delegated to the superintendent. And so it, it would not have come to the board.
Where's that threshold? In 2017, I saw how much it cost because it was on the board agenda. And if it's similar in price, then it should have been over the threshold.
In, in C H, delegated to the superintendent. If it's budgeted, the superintendent has authority to approve it, and there is not a dollar threshold level. And that's in policy C H local.
I have C H open. Is it contracts for the purchase of produce and fuel? I think that's the only one that has no threshold.
It should be contracts, budgeted contracts. I think it says, I can't remember the language exactly, but it says budgeted contracts.
And the threshold is $100,000?
Mr. Soffe?
If I might, President Choa, I believe that, that Ms. Austin may be referring to page 2 of C H local under delegation of authority, where it says the board delegates the superintendent the authority to approve. And then item number 2 is budgeted purchases of and contracts for other goods or services except for those acquired through sole source in an amount over $100,000 per year. Well, the exception would not be applicable in this case because it's, it's not a sole-source acquisition in an amount of over $100,000 a year. So the board in C H local has delegated to the superintendent budgeted purchases of and contracts for other goods or services. The other would refer back to item number 1, which is limited to purchases of produce and fuel. So other purchases are also delegated to the superintendent, again, except for sole source in an amount of over $100,000 per year. And then also, it, it is also the item number 3, to the extent this involves professional services, item number 3 also delegates the superintendent contracts for, for the provision of professional services except for those over $100,000, if acquired without an open solicitation or through sole source. And in this case, it was, it was acquired through an open solicitation. So to the extent it involved professional services, item number 3 would also apply.
Thank you.
Well, the only thing we have to say is that there's-
Mr. Chacon, I think you, you need to be recognized by the board president.
I think he signaled to me, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead and state your, what you had.
The, the evaluation where they determine that the other vendor is a, is better qualified or a best value, there's a lot of gray area there. I'm sure that the, under, under a deposition of, of the board members, they would not be able to justify in any way, any reason to rank my client in any, in any of the categories as lesser qualified or better, better value for any purpose or any part of the entire bid. I am confident of this. I went through it very carefully. And I'm familiar with the other company, and they really do not compare. And so for you to be able to, to really take a good look at this, you have to look at the, the personnel, the jobs to be done, the experience, who's qualified, and, and the abilities of the company. For example, the eight-hour deal. Nobody told us, non-disclosure, "Well, if you can't do the eight-hour deal, we can waive that. We can, you can tell us how much longer." But the fact of the matter is that the eight-hour deal is something very important because if you get some kind of spillage of mold or asbestos and you do not, and you cannot get it within the eight hour, the liability that the, that the board exposes the district to because they did not comply with the eight-hour turnaround time that is recommended can expose you to liability. So we didn't, we had no, no, no indication that they could waive that. And we could say, "You know, why, why should we have a lab to better compete to, for these regulations? Why don't we just send it somewhere else?" And, and that is a really big violation of, of the standards that the board should be looking at. It's why do we have regulations to begin with? Why is there an eight-hour turnaround? When can we waive it? Are we favoring somebody for some reason or another? And that's the only thing that I can conclude with, that there's some kind of favoring because there's no empirical comparison to come out with these numbers. And I, and I don't think that the board or the selection committee will be able to come up with any empirical evidence to justify any of the decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd like to talk about the things that they, they were talking about. I mean, they're, they're experts in contracting and all that. They don't understand the, the technical terms or the technical things that are involved with this work. We're talking about a carcinogen, and it's, it's highly regulated. The school is highly regulated. It's not that you can do the three-year inspection anytime you want to. That's a requirement under the AHRAs. And obviously, the consultant that you have on is not telling you that. You do need it every three years, or you can get a $10,000 per day per violation. As far as the C I H, how would it affect my price? Please, I told you all that. This guy is a highly qualified person with a lot of education. He will not work with a firm that doesn't have any degrees. He would rather work with somebody that has a P E. And that's maybe why they didn't get a C I H. There was another third company, they had a C I H, and they're a very well-known company. Now, saying that a C I H, come on. We need to talk about, I can talk about my expertise and what I know. You can talk about your, your contracts and, yeah, why would it affect my price? It affects my price because my engineers have to work with this guy. That's how it's gonna affect my price.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rosales?
And in listening to this, it, it, as a, as a board member, it puts me in a real precarious situation. And, and let me just go back, 2015, when I was running for board position here. I came across an individual on the streets. And at that time, he made a comment, "You're going into, you may be going into a sled." I said, "Yes, I, that's who I want to serve." And he said, "Well, I have a certain company." And I don't even ask me what it was. He says, "I have bid it for that, for work for years, never got it." And when I got on board, Xavier De La Torre and I had some conversations. When we get these bids and what have you, are we being fair? Are we being transparent? So the question to me tonight, as you come forward, Mr. Chacon, with your clients, and for the question for the board and administration, all of us, are we being fair? One question I have, how many times have you had bids for Isleta, Mr. Aguña?
I have been working for Isleta for 24 years.
How many contracts have you received?
And it's, I couldn't even tell you.
I've been working for Isleta for 24 years. And I lost it in 2016. And like I said, I, I cannot remember how many contracts, but I might have been in, in the thousands. And we were always on time with everything. And we did have a C I H. It wasn't called for at that time, but we had a C I H, which was my uncle, who soon retired, and helped us make sure that everything is. We're talking about our carcinogen, and we gotta make sure that everything is done properly, not half-assed.
But you'd have had work from Isleta?
Yes, we have had work.
Okay.
And we lost it because we were not the low bid. And that's when I was kind of worried.
Excuse me, sir. So the question is that I have, and for all of us here, are we being transparent? Are we being fair? And I'm, I'm not a judgment question. Is there additional cost? Are we looking, overlooking a certain aspect of the bid process? And it's actually saying, "Well, you know, we can," and I don't know this. It's, to me, it's very complicated. I'm not that smart. So to make a decision for me like this, it brings up a lot of questions. Another question I have is the disclosure, the non-disclosures, the changes. Is this in the norm? Ms. Susan, is it in the norm where we make changes? And I'm talking about these non-disclosures that were mentioned. Excuse me, if I, if I sound confused, I am a little bit confused. That's why I'm asking the question.
If you're talking about, for example, the decision that we wouldn't require the awardee to have a lab result within eight hours. So we do put in the solicitation terms and conditions, and they're included in your packet. And I can find you the place where we can decide to waive requirements, to waive technicalities. And as I recall from Ms. Gerlach, it was a question of, they couldn't respond in eight hours, but they could respond in 12, something along that line, and we felt that was sufficient. So, so we do have the right, and we do sometimes waive requirements as still overall being in the best interests of the district. We do do that. In terms of what, excuse me? And we disclose in the solicitation terms and conditions that we can do that. So, yes, there are some things that we, in order to keep business flowing and not have to go back and resolicitate, resolicit something just because we don't get one thing out of a large request, we can, we can look at what does it give us? Does it meet our needs? And that's what happened with the rebid. We put it out, but there, it was felt that it didn't frame the request properly the way we need it. So it, it never went to an evaluation. So we reframed the solicitation, and we sent it out again. And that was made clear to all bidders. And everyone had the opportunity to bid on this rebid, and they did. did. And they did. So we've had work in the past where we've, we've awarded multiple vendors, and sometimes Sun City got the work, sometimes its competitors got the work. In this case, we decided to award to one firm. Why? Because you can imagine that a lot of this works well as a packet, okay? So we did award to one firm. We talked about awarding multiple, you know, as discussions about multiple awards, all right? But Sun City wouldn't have it, and they've admitted that. And you can read that in the packet. They wanted us to unaward the other firm. And you haven't been able to hear from the other firm here tonight, and you haven't been able to see their qualifications. You're hearing some conclusory statements from SCAI. But we have this process that includes an evaluation committee so that not every single decision needs to come up to you to be in the weeds. We have this process. You have delegated it. You have approved the process. Many times, we've passed, we've, we've done $450 million worth of bonds and another $400 million worth of bonds. We buy hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of goods and services every month, year after year, based on this process. Sometimes, a vendor's going to feel aggrieved that they thought they didn't, they didn't get subjectively evaluated the way they should have. There is some subjectivity. There's going to have to be when you consider the reputation and quality. Not everything can be exactly measured. But that is a process that has served this district well. It has insulated you. Have you heard, in this, in the years that you've been on this board, have you heard one vendor grievance come up to you? No. Because we do handle it well. We do handle it fairly. This is the first one that has come in front of you.
Just to answer you, no, we haven't. And, and I appreciate that. And, but I just want to make sure this is not the first one. And transparency and fairness, to me, means a lot. And, and that's all I can say at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
I would just offer that the analogy would be the same as you might find in an employment selection process. I think the gentleman's absolutely right. You cannot interview the members of an employee selection panel and get empirical, objective facts that would support their reason for selecting one individual over another individual. They cannot base it on factors outside of the job description, but they do base it on multiple factors. How they, as individuals, arrive at their conclusion would be hard to prove in any court of law. A deposition would not, I think, stand as evidence in court as to why a member of a panel, either a selection panel for employment or a selection panel for goods and services, arrived at the conclusion they arrived at. They're considering multiple variables, multiple factors, reputation, past performance, presentation, price, and in the aggregate, they arrive at their conclusion. And their conclusion, while imperfect, I'm certain, is not subject to be challenged in a court of law. That's what they arrive at. Otherwise, we wouldn't need a panel. We'd simply take all of the data, compare it side by side, and arrive at the selection. Can you imagine going through an employee selection process and waiving the face-to-face interview and simply saying, all I'm going to do is take every resume, put them side by side. I'm going to find the one with the most years' experience, the one that went to the most prestigious university, the one that was in the right fraternity, and I'm going to assign points based on that without having ever met the candidate. That's not our human nature. We want to meet the people, both on paper and in person, who are going to provide the services. And based on that experience, each individual arrives at their conclusion, and in the aggregate, that becomes the recommendation of the panel. And as I think Susan has said, unless we deviate from law, reg, practice, policy, it is imperfect, perhaps. But it's the system that we've used to probably be the only school district in this county who has come in under budget and who has delivered on time and who has provided the quality that our communities expect, our students and faculties need. And when all things are equal, we do rely on local labor. But that's assuming all things are equal. And in this case, apparently, all things were not equal.
Okay, thank you. At this time, do any trustees wish to go into closed session in order to discuss any legal aspects of this appeal with Mr. Safi, board legal counsel? Okay. The board may make a decision on this grievance appeal at this meeting or at the next regularly scheduled board meeting. If the board does not make a decision regarding the complaint by the end of the next regularly scheduled meeting, the lack of a response by the board will have the effect of upholding the administration, administrative decision at Level Two. Does any trustee wish to make a motion?
Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
You have a motion to adjourn? Adjourn.